Good evening. We call to order the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We note that we have six of our seven council members in attendance. Councilman Tom Duncan is excused tonight. With that, we turn to Councilman Steve Beeler for our opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. Today being Patriot Day, a day we didn't formally celebrate 18 years ago. Remembering today the events of September 11th, 2001, and the surprise attack upon our country. That's that we watch a short video, then I have some remarks. Thank you. I just want to make a few comments. One being that most of us who are alive today had never experienced anything like that. And I think that it's important as a society that we remember those events, not just those who lost their lives, but how it affected all of us. And that we never become accustomed or permissive of evil in our society. There was some good that came from that event. If you remember, there was an increase of patriotism. There were people signing up to fight terror. There were American flags everywhere. And there was a unity that, in large part, I think, prevented our society at that time. Some of the zeal, I think, has persisted and remains with us. But in my observation, that zeal has no longer focused on enemies abroad or even a common enemy. But we have somewhat turned our zeal against each other and our public discourse has become less than it should be. We may have differing ideas and opinions, but we are all Americans. And I think that we should return to a civility and a respect in our public discourse. And that is one thing that is important to me. On Patriot's Day, that we be patriots standing for a common cause, which is this great and unique nation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Profound words, good thought. So next, we go to our minutes of September 4th. Motion on Minutes. Move for approval of September 4th Minutes? Senator? Problem before us. Any further comments? Say "none." All in favor of approving Minutes, please say "a."
Aye, aye.
Those opposed, say "no." It passes unanimously. Next, we have our comment period. We have a number of people who have signed up to speak today. And just so you're aware, the comment period is not a discussion or a debate or anything like that. The comment period is meant for you to take up to, but not exceeding, five minutes. And all your comments should be directed towards the mayor, not to individual council members. The city manager and council may opt to respond later, but if so, it must be very brief unless the item is already on our agenda. By state law, every policy discussion requires that it be on our agenda for the public's protection, so that everyone has a chance for that. So what we will do is, if items are brought up, that we will try and identify those and put them on our agenda next week unless it is something that we have already clearly discussed and established a policy. So with that, we have the following individuals. By the way, there will be a timer right here. And we also have a maximum of 30 minutes. So if some of you take less, we'll get all of you. But if you all take five minutes, the last two won't have time. With that, Ellen Jensen.
Hello. My name's Ellen Jensen. I live on Odell Drive, which is off of 4800 West in West Valley City. And we have requested for many, many years speed bumps on that street. We've got little children that ride their bikes, that walk their dogs. We've asked the police officers to take care of that. And they suggested, this is my first time at a meeting like this. We desperately need the people. It's 25 miles per hour on that street. And there's some people that love to go as high as 40. And we scream at them when we're in the street. We... Nothing helps. This is going on for years and years. I've lived on that street for 40 years. We actually had a child 30 years ago that was hit by a car. I wasn't right there. I don't know how fast that car was going. But we need at least two speed bumps. But we should really have... And I know we would never get three, but we should have two. So I'm speaking on behalf of these little children ranging from 3 years old to 14 years old. And I've asked the children to stay on the sidewalk. And you know how children are. So I am petitioning to... I even had a petition of many, many people in the neighborhood sign. It was turned in many years ago. Nothing ever happened. We did have a... I don't know what you'd call these things, but it was the cable that was stretched across the road to see how much traffic was going. And nothing has helped. And so please consider speed bumps on Odell Drive. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Jensen.
Well, like my wife was saying, we've lived there for 40 years. And we did take a petition about 10 years ago. And generally, we turned it into a concealed robbery. Nobody ever looked at it. I don't think. They had speed limit signs put up that monitor the speed the cars are going. But I swear, some of those cars go at least 50 miles an hour in the 25 mile an hour zone. And we've talked to police over the years. And I'm afraid someone isn't getting killed, a little child. So I beg you, please, put in at least three speed bumps. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Janet Miller.
I'm actually here for the same reason. We had a block party a few nights ago. And the officer there, we talked to him. And he said that we needed to appear at the city council to get some action for speed bumps. The child that was hit a few number of years ago was in front of my house. That was a very frightening experience. But that road is just like a speedway. It is horrible. And we have a lot of young people moving into our neighborhood now because some of the older ones, like me, that's been there 54 years, were ready to leave this world. And these young families with these little kids, they're all over now again. And we need those speed bumps. So we'd really appreciate if someone would take some interest in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like Janet Torrance Martinez.
Hello. I am the community manager for a property located on 13th West and 3800 South. And it is called Rivers. And this property only has one entrance, and it's right on 13th West. And what happens is the people traveling north on 13th West don't see that there is like a bend on the road and cars are coming out. And there's no sign on the road at all saying there's incoming traffic. And now, at the entrance of my property, there's a bunch of cars parking. So we can't see when we come out. We can't see cars coming. There's been two terrible accidents, and there is no parking area. So there's a bunch of cars parked on the left side of the property. They are blocking the view. So the cars that are coming north don't see us coming out, and we don't see them come in. We had two terrible accidents in the car for total. And I'm really concerned about the next could be a fatal accident. And I have no way of towing those cars because I don't own that road. And so I don't know if they can be a combination. Maybe we can say, "I'm not parking," or there could be some kind of signs saying there are some cars coming out. I don't know. I'm just concerned. And I wanted to do something about it. My residents come to me and want me to have an answer. I don't know what the answer is. One of the ladies that is here today, she was one of the people that had her car destroyed. And I'm thankful that she didn't die because it was a horrible accident. So I was hoping that my residents would be here today. I told them they would be here, and they're not here. So I don't know what to tell you, but I'm very concerned. So I ask you for help.
Thank you. Next, David Tanner.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is David Tanner. I'm the CEO of Granger Medical Clinic. On August 6th of this year, Granger received a default notice from West Valley City delaying the construction, regarding the construction and the redevelopment agency. I ask the city, does it want Granger Medical Clinic in the Fairborn Development Area? One, Granger intends on building its flagship clinic operation on that property with over 100 physicians that provide care for over hundreds of thousands of West Valley City residents. We have been in West Valley since 1954 and are moving back to a property adjacent to where this new building is going. We have the largest physician group that you have in the city. Any thought that Granger does not want to build this building would be erroneous. We have invested more than $2.7 million in this project and do not intend to walk away from it incomplete. We have not purchased any other clinic anywhere in Utah, developed any other site, or broken ground on any other few clinic ahead of this. This has our number one priority. As instructed by the default notice, Granger is only to communicate with West Valley via attorney, speaking to attorney. Our attorney has been working with the city council attorney, but have come to an impasse. The impasse is created by the default. We can no longer get a construction loan with Zion's Bank to break ground. Zion's won't let us break ground without resolving the default notice. The resolution that we've been given so far is that we need to pull a permit and start turning dirt, and we're unable to do that. I am accompanied today by members of my Board of Directors and physicians, who are also physicians on the Real Estate Board of Directors. Please play up the pictures. Oakland and HKS has provided us with some ample opportunity to make some tweaks and improvements to this, cutting $2.1 million on the building. We were hoping to present that to the RDA to get acceptance on the building. They rejected that and want us to pull contract, a permit, on the old grounds, which are over here on this side. This is the old building. These are renderings of the new building. They're both Class A buildings. So they both meet all of the requirements of the ADL as specified. There's little modifications and changes on some of the exterior. And we wanted to work with the city ADL office to resolve this. So I ask the city, do you want Granger to be there? Granger wants to be there. And it would appear from the comments the attorneys have had back and forth, there is some confusion about why there has been a delay. There's a confusion about Granger's interest in that. And therefore, I would request that the city provide Granger an opportunity in the next week's city council meeting, work session, work study session, to present to the city our detail and our plan. We're ready to turn dirt on this before the end of October with the help of the city to release this default and give us a modified permit to move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Next is Tim Hollingsed. Hollingsed? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Tim Hollingsed. I am a general surgeon, and I've been with Granger Clinic since 1995, back when we had our clinic on 35th South and Winter Mountain West, or where College that was that took over and demolished. But as Mr. Tanner has mentioned, we have been here for a long time, and we intend to stay here. We are the largest physician-owned clinic group in Salt Lake County. We are not owned and beholden by any corporation in Nashville or Dallas or anywhere else. All of our income comes from the providers. We provide... We don't build things. We don't make things. We just try to help people stay healthy and get healthy. I can assure you that we have been working diligently on these plans. This is not a standard office building with four walls and windows and you put partitions in there. This is a medical office building. And there are some very unique challenges associated with that. And our architects and designers have... We've been working with them for over two years trying to design this building and the interior to the needs that all of our providers require. As Mr. Tanner mentioned, we are at an impasse. And we truly want to get going. There's nobody who wants to keep going more than us. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris Hutchinson.
Evening, Mayor. I am also a member of Granger Medical Clinic's board. I've been with Granger since 99. I grew up here in West Valley. This is my home. This is where my mom still lives, right across the street over here on Lemay Avenue. And if I have enough time, I'm gonna get to some issues on that street. But I came back from residency and joined Granger to come back into the community. So I've been part of this community and trying to work in this clinic and help and serve the community. As a member of the board, it's been one of our vital discussions is that we are Granger. We are West Valley. We are where we have been. I was here when we were at 30... I came on right when we transferred from 32 and 35, you know, where Pete Thompson's pharmacy was, over to 41st and Bangator. Well, we can't stay in that building at Bangator anymore. That building's outdated. It's not working. It won't let us grow. It won't let us do the things we need to do. That's why we need to build this new flagship building. And yeah, we have had some struggles. Why? Our biggest troubles are because we're a small business, basically. We're not a giant corporation with loads of money. So getting loans and stuff is difficult. And the cost of construction's gone remarkably since we started this endeavor. Now, we finally got ourselves worked through, but we now are handcuffed. And I would plead with you to allow us to continue the presentation so we can get this building going, so I can get my mom off my back, first of all. She keeps asking me every week when it's gonna be built. And so I just want to reiterate what they've said and add my viewpoint on that also. Now, here's the new topic. Beaver Street, where the old D's was, right there on 35. But that new street sign there with the new turn, you have to go in to turn right or turn right out. There's parking that's right on that street with the Restaurant City. And right when you turn off the 35, there's cars always parked there. And worried about my mother, I mean, she's now in her 80s. And she's still driving quite a lot. Well, she comes around that corner, and those cars are parked right there. And it's just an accident waiting to happen because they're usually only about 10 feet off the turn, and you can't see them when you turn. So I'm quite concerned about that little turn. I've watched her almost hit the car a couple of times coming around there. So if that's something the city could look at, maybe just a no parking sign around that corner would be wonderful so I don't have an 85-year-old lady wearing a parked car. Thank you.
Thank you. John Tseng.
Sorry, everybody. I received a notice coming for the meeting. Really, I don't think I have any issue right here. So I'm so sorry. Can I show anyone what it's for?
Yeah, if you'll hand it to our... Perhaps what we could do is have you meet right after with a member of staff on that. Was there anyone else here to speak in our public comment period? Seeing no further comments, we'll close the public comment portion. And let's see. Mr. Pyle, any comments?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I normally don't have any comments, but I'll have a couple or three tonight. So first, I just wanted to direct Mr. Willardson to get with Ms. Jensen and the other lady whose name I missed. Sorry.
Ken?
The second lady who spoke on their traffic issues. I'm sorry, they apparently were misdirected by our officer as far as coming in here for making a request on speed bumps and traffic control and that sort of thing. So I'll have Mr. Willardson go and speak with them and direct them down the proper path for getting that process started in terms of looking at their traffic. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay, all right. Second point on Granger Medical. I could spend 15, 20 minutes talking about the difficulties that we've had over the last while, but that would actually be inappropriate at that point because the letter of default has been... That list has been sent to the entity. And the communication between the two parties at this point, unfortunately, should be conducted through our respective attorneys and not in a setting, especially in a setting such as this one. So for sure, I would recommend, and of course, the council gets to do what they want, and recommend not entertaining any further negotiation or commentary about the project itself in a public meeting in this one or the next one. The only other comment I will add to that is, the only miscommunication that we've been able to ascertain from our side seems to be within Granger Medical's staff and structure themselves. We're crystal clear on where we're at, what agreement and the contract states and what their responsibilities are under that. And all the notice of default says, which you will remember, I sent to you a number of weeks ago with this issue, is asking them to perform according to the contract. And the last comment I had is for... It's actually not for the gentleman that spoke or asked to hand up the note. It was just for your information. He's one of the folks that's one of the four right-of-way acquisition items for the 4100 project. So we'll have Eric speak with him later, right after the meeting. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Let's see. So council members, any further comments? And then I'll... We'll talk about what's on our future agenda.
I do want to make a comment. Again, it's a bias, I guess. Just I was at the groundbreaking for Granger Medical, August 5th, 2015. Very excited at that time. Very disappointed we haven't seen anything for over three years.
Okay, anything else? So first of all, speed bumps and speeding. Might be wise for us to get an update just on the process. I know we often receive requests for traffic control devices, whether it be speed bumps, speed limit signs, the traffic signs displaying speed, et cetera. And maybe just give us a brief summary. We'll maybe put that on our study meeting agenda just to kind of get an update where that's at. Although, we'll have them work directly with staff on this particular issue. The same would be true of the 1300 West, 3800 South parking on the blind intersection. That's kind of a parking issue. And I don't know the specifics on that particular site. But maybe if someone could look at that and say, "Is it a blind intersection, and what is the safety hazard there?" Granger Medical Center, because of the current status, we could have an update on that, but it would not be in a public meeting at this point. at this point. But it certainly wouldn't hurt for the council to be updated just, you know, on current status in a closed session. Oftentimes in these situations, because I'm not an attorney, you know, I might inadvertently say things that wouldn't be helpful to the process. And we, and so maybe we'll just say maybe an update next week on that. Okay? And then the parking on Lemay Street? Another one, maybe we can just look at that one. That was the gentleman?
I think the parking's actually on Beaver Street.
Oh, Beaver Street. Okay. What was Lemay?
That's where she lives. That's, Beaver Street goes into Lemay.
Okay.
Beaver Street comes right off 35th.
Okay. And again, you know, is that a blind intersection there? We may need to look at, maybe we can combine those two blind intersection type things to see if, if there's any safety concerns that we can and should address. So we'll put that on the agenda. Everyone okay with that? Okay. With that then, let's see. We do have one working and then, how are you? Mr. Pyle, what about, you mentioned Mr. Willardson meeting with them. Did you want to? Maybe you can be doing that while we're continuing. I suspect they're not interested in the rest of our agenda.
Certainly able, certainly able to do that now when we release Mr. Willardson to do that, Mayor, that's fine.
Briefly, briefly. Or they can set up a meeting or whatever and then we'll get Mr. Willardson back in here because we may have issues to review with him. Okay? So, we're ready to go on to the next item. We've covered everything there, so we're on number seven resolutions. Okay. Let's begin with Resolution 18-161, approving the purchase of a self-contained breathing apparatus unit. And this is really for use by the fire department, but it's, it's called a unit, but it's actually, we have different units. This is a compressor unit which is used to fill up those other units. Am I saying that right?
Just using the word tanks might be clearer.
Okay, yes, tanks, yeah. So we have a big tank that fills the little tank. Is that right? Okay. And very critical, and having that extra one is, is essential to continuing operations. We have had one that's 20 years old, so. And this is, they're not cheap, almost $56,000. That is the item before us to authorize this purchase. Then with that introduction to the council, for any further comments or a motion if you want.
Mayor move for approval of Resolution 18-161.
Second?
Property before us, any further comments? Pretty straightforward, name is there. So to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Next, we have Resolution 18-162. This is what is called a franchise agreement with MCI Metro Access Transmission Services Corp. That is doing business as Verizon Access Transmission Services and the city for telecommunications network in the city. And I need to remember here, this followed the pattern of most of the previous ones that we have done, which, and I don't think it's in connection with the small ones. We've authorized about eight, seven or eight of these, Mr. Pyle.
When we, you and I were trying to remember, Mayor, we were thinking of something on the order of half a dozen. Turns out it's more like a dozen, so.
A dozen. And this just gives them the right to do some infrastructure work here in the city. Fairly routine, but we do have them come through the city. With that then, pretty standard 10-year period way we do all of them, so. With that then, to the council.
I would move for approval of Resolution 18-163.
Three or two?
Sorry, two. My little world went one too many.
Yeah, 160.
Sorry, 162.
So that's property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu? And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, we are to Resolution 18-163, which I believe is the one that was mentioned in our previous meeting, that this issue has been resolved and so we will not be addressing that issue.
So do we need a motion to remove it from the agenda?
That probably would be the.
Who moved? Second.
Okay. All in favor of removing it from the agenda for tonight? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those posing no? Let's see, do we have to do a roll call vote on that? No, okay. I didn't think so, I thought, wait, I better check. And there were no no's, and so it was unanimous. It's removed from the agenda. Now, we do have, let's see, four other resolutions here and they are all on the same issue, but on different properties. Is that a correct way to state that? So, but I think with these, we have to do each one individually on a roll call vote. So, let's talk about, these are, and a, for the city to acquire by negotiation or condemnation all property interest in various properties. This first one will be from Valley View Memorial at 4445 West, 4100 South. And let's see on these, what else do we need to mention on that?
Probably have to mention, we're not trying to take over the whole property, just space.
Oh, yes. Mayor, I'm sorry. City Attorney has some information he needs to share on the, on the items before us.
Oh, okay. But yes, just for the public statement, Councilman Christensen's correct. We're not taking their whole property. This is on the 4100 South project, where we're doing some side road improvements.
Yes, sir, and I just wanted to point out a strange quirk in the state law as far as eminent domain cases go and our public meetings. As you handle each of these, each of these items, the state statute requires that you allow the property owner or representative to speak on the matter if they are here to do so. And so I, the gentleman who was here earlier, he didn't want to speak. He, I spoke with him, he was the last item on the, on the agenda as far as the eminent domain goes. But if anyone else is here to speak, again, not noticed as a public meeting, not a meeting, not a, not noticed as a public hearing, but the statute does, does require us to allow them to address the council. We don't do these very often, I just wanted to make the council aware that that was.
Thank you, because I was not aware of that, so. So, with that, we have this Resolution 18-164 before us. Is there anyone here to comment on this?
It's not anyone, sir.
Oh, excuse me. Is the property owner, sorry, you're right. Seeing none. Okay. Back to the council. So do we need to add any more comments? Mr. Buhler, you're usually pretty good on these legal issues.
I would just say, you know, this is for the roadway. We're allowed to build a road. We're allowed to do what's necessary to acquire a property, but it's a small sliver of property adjacent to the roadway to expand it as planned and needed. And although we are considering this action and I, we are still trying to negotiate. We, condemnation is not our first choice. We will negotiate, we will pay. And even if the property is condemned, part of that process is to pay fair market value. We still pay for the property. And with that, I will move for approval of Resolution 18-164.
Second. Any further comments, then to our city recorder?
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 18-165, same principle. Acquire by negotiation or condemnation, property, Valley View Memorial, located now this address, 4391 West, 4100 South. Same applies here on the comments of Councilman Buhler. And is there any, is there anyone representing the property owner, the property owner here to comment? Seeing none, back to the council.
Move for approval then of Resolution 18-165.
Second.
Property before us, seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the roll call vote.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu? And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 18-166, same situation, but this is mind and motion Utah. 4400 West LLC, this is at 4395 West, 4100 South. Same situation, by negotiation or condemnation. And, oh, I'm sorry, what? Is the property owner or his representative here? Does it have to be the actual property owner or it can't be a representative?
Well, I'm not sure about that likely legal representative. It could be that, yes.
But it looks like they're not here, either one of them, so. No. Okay, then, to the council.
Mayor move for approval of Resolution 18-166.
Second?
Motion on a second, property before us. Seeing no further comments, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Resolution 18-167, this is property Chung Seung and Hong Seol, located at 4758 West, 4100 South, in the same situation as was previously discussed. Is there, and he indicated that he was here earlier, but he did not want to speak, and so I assume he is not here.
That's correct.
Okay. Then, back to the council.
I think it's, I just have a comment for you because I know presumably.
You can make a comment and then the motion, or you can just make a comment, whatever you want.
Same. I'm still gonna vote for it, but it's just a little interesting because it was brought up before. I mean, this 4100 project is a big project. It's not one that came up overnight. And there are properties along there that have built back or in anticipation for something like this, whereas this property was built to specification with landscaping and all of that there. So, and it's a recently built property. And so, I don't know how that played out or why that happened and it didn't happen, you know, with the pharmacy down, down the way. But I will, I'm just wondering why it's interesting. To tell someone, and I'm not asking for an answer, I'm just bringing it up.
Okay, yeah, I was just gonna get you an answer.
Build this out. This is how we want you to do it. And then we say, well, now we need to tear it up.
Okay.
I will move to approve Resolution 18-167. And since I was going to bring up the, the idea, the problem, I'll second what Councilman Petis Manu said about we need to plan ahead as we find, okay, these projects still.
We have a motion on the second, property before us. Seeing no further comments, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
And now that we've completed those four, perhaps a couple of comments. The city does not do these things lightly. In fact, in the discussion with the, our city manager, oh, probably two years ago, I asked how many eminent domain items have we actually done? And I think I was told there was one in the last 10 years.
I can't remember the number at the time, Mayor, but it's like one or two. And even of those we've done, at least half, if not more of them, haven't even been an actual real property or physical property condemnation. They were property interests such as lease holdings, that sort of thing. And I might add to your comment, Mayor, that even in this particular case here, as was mentioned and as action was taken, one of these situations had already been resolved before it got here to this meeting. The two Valley View Memorial ones, we think will be resolved before any kind of condemnation has to happen. But the process was taken too long, so we had to make sure we were prepared. The third one, the mind and motion one, I don't know and we're not really sure where that was going. And the last one, as you saw, the gentleman came in here to try to address or get some information on this evening. We just had been unable to, to get productive communication with them. So yeah, you're right, Mayor, we take every effort to avoid having to do this.
And, and this is extremely unusual to be to this point. We actually have negotiated with a number of people along the corridor already. And in fact, the next item on our agenda, or no, it's not.
Next week.
Next week, yeah. Next week we'll have a number of these. We typically have at least a few in every council meeting. We don't have, but we're, along with some, a warranty deed, we also have a temporary construction easement, you know, roads. People have to have ways to get to and from work and to their homes and these roads are, we wish we had a lot more room. We try and minimize the impact, but it is necessary to do a few things in order to keep these in proper order and to have a nice city where we can do things that we need to do. With that then, comments, we go on to item eight. New business on our agenda. And we go to application S9-2018 filed by Kurt Dial. Final plat approved for the Lily Cove subdivision at 3248 South, 6400 West. And I believe that these are one of those that Councilman Buhler always likes to point out. I don't mean to stir your thunder, but we don't have, this is just final plat approval. I believe that they've met all the requirements or were there, there were a couple of exceptions on the. No, I don't miss one?
No.
Okay, okay. Right, where they meet the requirements, this is more of a checking the box. And with that, I move for approval of application S9-2018. Second. Any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder for the vote.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Buhler?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
And Mayor Biglow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Yes, perhaps it may be better than to check the box. What it is is a formality we are required to take by state law. But as long as they meet the requirements, they meet the requirements that we have preset up. Let's see, now application S11-2018 filed by Ken Holson. Final plat approval for the reserve subdivision located at 3755 South, 5450 West. This is one that is familiar to the council. We've had a lot of discussion on this area, in this particular project. But now, having approved the zoning changes and other things, they're now coming in with the final plat. That is the issue before us, to the council.
Mayor move for approval of application S11-28-
Mayor, move for approval of Application S-11-2018.
Second.
Property before us, any further comments? Seeing none, to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfeld?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Link?
Yes.
Councilman Petis Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay. I actually did check with you, Mr. Pyle, I assumed there was no reason for a closed session or, okay. So that completes our business. Any final comments from the council? No, looks like we're all ready to go home, so.
Motion to adjourn?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those who say no, passage unanimously. We're adjourned. Thank you all for coming.